Good evening. I hope everybody's had a good New Year so far. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Can I look for one?
You couldn't find a flag.
It's out here, I believe this is right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have enough people, so I will call this meeting to order. Has everybody had a chance to look over the October minutes? If everybody is good for the October minutes, could I please get a...
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor to approve the minutes?
Please say.
Good morning.
At this time, does anybody have any adjustments for the agenda?
There might be some late arrival people that might want to speak, I don't know.
Okay. At this time, I would like to request an adjustment to the agenda for basically a statement from myself, the chair, and if anybody else has any adjustments, but I am requesting an adjustment for a statement from myself.
Is that statement going to be before the election, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the amendment. The agenda as amended. Segue it.
All approved. Okay. And like I said, Happy New Year to everybody. This, of course, is the January meeting, which we have, you know, elections for Chairman and Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. So just in case this is my last meeting, I want to thank y'all for treating me with respect, and I want to thank my Planning Board members for the respect that they have given me. I also would like to make a statement. As you all know, FEMA was here. This is why we couldn't have our meeting in November. They are updating all the maps and doing more studies, and it's also come to my attention that the North Carolina State Model Flood Plan Ordinance has got some changes coming up, which they are also working on studies since Helene hit and all of that. I just wanted to state that I think changes at this point are preempted until we see what the state is going to do. And that's just kind of my opinion. And I thank you for the time to speak, and again, I thank you for treating me with the respect that you all have. I appreciate it 100%. We will move on to the elections for Chairman and Vice Chair at this time.
I'll nominate Jean. I believe she's done a great job if she'll accept my nomination. I wish she's done a great job as Chairman of this board, and I'd be happy to nominate her as the Chairman.
I'll say it then.
Is there any other nominations?
Name for Coach here. Oh, sorry.
Okay, no more nominations for Chair. It's been motion made, second made. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Tag your it.
Tag your it.
You gotta do it.
Sorry, Jean.
Okay, and now the nominations for Vice Chair. Any nominations from the Board?
And Lee is currently...
Lee is currently our Vice Chair.
I was about to say, yeah, I would nominate Lee again if he would have that... If he would take that nomination, that would be my recommendation, is Lee serve as the... or continue to serve as the Vice Chair.
Segue it.
Any other nominations? All in favor for Lee remaining... Are you okay with this?
Yes.
Okay. We should ask you first, huh, Mike? Sorry. Okay, all in favor of Lee remaining Vice Chair? No opposed? Congratulations. Okay. There are no liaison comments tonight, as we don't have a liaison. We will now go into the public comment period. As you know, it is five minutes per person, please. Yeah, please.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
The two things that you've... Again, is there a way to talk about that? When did we talk about that?
When we get to the old business.
Gotcha. Okay, Narrell Kirkland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look around this room. You will probably see some relatives, members of your family, kin, certainly friends, neighbors. Surely, you would never want to put one of them knowingly at risk. And yet, that is exactly what the county commissioners have done this past year by diminishing the flood plain and fill regulations. As you know, in Hurricane Helene, we had one death. And that compares, if I may favorably, to when we had four in Hurricane Ivan. We don't want to incur more or do something that makes that more possible. And yet, nature has a devious way of finding the easiest path to destruction. And I want to urge all of you as a body to convince the commissioners they have made the wrong move last year. They should return the fill and sedimentation regulations back to what we knew in 2023 and avoid the possibility of further loss of life.
Thank you.
Okay, Callie Moore?
Good evening. My name is Callie Moore, and I represent Mountain True, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that champions clean water, resilient forests, and healthy communities across the southern Blue Ridge. My background is in water quality and ownership management, and I have 25 years of experience working in the mountains of southwestern North Carolina and North Georgia. Since this is the first time I've spoken to this body, I'll just start by saying that Mountain True is opposed to the previously proposed changes to the flood plain ordinance in Macon County. During various public meetings here over the past eight months, I've heard five stories about how the current ordinance has been a hardship for local residents, and every single one had to do with vehicular access and parking. I hope if this body does make a recommendation of change to the commissioners, it will be simply to allow limited amounts of fill for the explicit purposes of access and parking rather than sweeping changes like the current proposed revisions. Macon County needs the protections offered by the existing ordinance in the face of stronger and more frequent storms, but the county especially needs it if a decision is made to remove Lake Emery Dam in the future. Mountain True is generally very much in favor of dam removal. We lobbied the General Assembly for Wildlife Resources Commission to receive $7.5 million for dam removal in western North Carolina, more than half of which has been allocated to the removal of Ella Dam on the Oconomie Lefty, and $300,000 of which is now being spent for removal of the high-hazard Burnington Lakes Dam right here in Macon County. However, the removal of Lake Emery Dam is much more complex. There's quite a bit of excess sediment from a variety of land uses entering the Little Tennessee River above the dam, and there is more bacterial and nutrient pollution upstream as well. The small reservoir today acts as a kind of in-river stormwater detention basin, protecting the huge amount of biodiversity of the river through the needmore gamelands downstream. Removing it without placing additional protections, like maybe riparian buffer protections or something like that, could result in damage to the river as well as increased flooding downstream. Quite a bit of study will be needed before a recommendation about dam removal can be made, in my opinion. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Bill McClary?
Well, thank you. I had wanted to actually go first because hopefully I can save us some trouble. The other day, I received a call from Warren Cave, Interim County Manager, and he said he'd been asked to call me by Josh Young to the effect that the commissioners are going to table discussion of the flood plain ordinance for some of the reasons that have been, as Jane has alluded to, and others. If that is in fact the case, it doesn't seem to me like it would be a real good use of time for all of us to explain once again all of our reasons for our positions on the question of the flood plain ordinance. I'm perfectly willing to do that if people want me to, and I think there's other people here that aren't too, but for now, I'm making the assumption that whatever the Planning Board may think you're not going to make a decision that's going to affect a vote of the county commission in the very near future. Segueing from that into Lake Emery. In what I just said, I'm representing the Water Quality Advisory Committee, and I think I can probably speak for us on Lake Emery too, although we haven't met about it. And I would like to second what Callie said, that it is an extremely complicated subject which merits a lot of very careful study. I couldn't tell you today what my position is on this, and that's not only a copying out, it's a way of admitting that it's complicated. I would like to offer my services, and I think the services the members of our committee for any of the studies that may be in the future, and hopefully we'll get that ball rolling, talking about Lake Emery tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth McCaskill?
Again, thank you for your time. I represent the Macon County Farm Bureau Board of Directors, and I would like to mention that the Resolutions Committee for our North Carolina State Farm Bureau has kept their opposition to fill in the flood plain for road beds. They've also been... Where you do fill in the flood plain, it may damage or impact other properties, so that has been in there. Another thing that's important is we need farmland preservation, and we need it now more than ever. We're 25 years away from a protein deficit in this world we live in. In other words, with current production technology, we will not be able to feed the human population in 2050. So saving that farmland is important. Our farmland in this county is along the flood plain area of the river, and that's some of the most productive farmland in this state. This state is losing farmland at the second highest rate of any state in the nation. So that's a real hard pill to swallow for most of the farmers. In November, I mentioned an example of a flood in the western states where one city, one development was on the upper terraces above the flood plain, and the flood plain was reserved for farming. The other built right on the flood plain, where they had the views of the river and used the river. When the floods came, it cost 30 times as much money to repair that, 30 times as it did the farmland damage. We're subjecting our taxpayers, our emergency management people, to this type of problem as we add to the flood plain. We're going to impact both upstream and downstream, and we don't know how much. All of these things cost taxpayers. We heard from emergency management about the risk for first responders for pollution, that they have to deal with rescuing people for debris and hazards in the river, and we're just adding to that problem as we go. Those first responders also have probably some long-term health concerns for the toxins and things that they may be exposed to during that. It costs the taxpayer money again for FEMA response. They occupied this room during what would have been your last meeting had you had a quorum present, but that didn't happen, but it was moved to another location, so we didn't have that meeting. Flood insurance is federally subsidized. That costs taxpayers money. So the more of that and the more flood insurance we have to buy just makes this whole situation more expensive to the taxpayer and has an impact on everybody, your pocket and my pocket too. Now, how soon do we forget? I know Helene's been mentioned. You need to drive through that area and look at some of the damage. You'll go up a road, and it'll look like, hey, nothing happened. You go around a curve, and it's horrendous. You see it on the news, and I know they show the worst of the worst when they pick it out because they want to be sensational, but folks, it's horrendous. We just barely missed it by a little bit. At 8:00 AM that morning, when this was moving through, we were in that target, and Murphy was going to be the eye of the storm, not us. So keep that in mind. Somebody mentioned that the state ordinance didn't require us to do these things. I hate to say this, but you know, one size does not fit all. The coastal plain and the blacklands of eastern North Carolina, the hilly Piedmont, which is clay soils and sand hills, and the mountains are not the same. The state puts some minimum requirements to try to suit everybody. It doesn't really fit us well at all. As example, if I gave every one of you a pair of nine-and-a-half shoes, and you had to put them on and walk to the Carpenter Building where the last meeting was held, some of you would be just fine because you wear nine-and-a-half shoes. Most everybody else in this room would be miserable. One size doesn't fit everybody. Think about that amendment. The state minimum requirements don't fit everybody. Remember, in the position you are as a planning board, you're to serve all of the citizens of this county, and sometimes we need to make a decision which is right, which is the correct decision to make rather than one that we feel is best for us personally. Thank you for your time.
Angela Martin?
Thank you. I'm Angela Lefey Martin with Alarca Expeditions, Macon County's very first female-run ecotourist business. My business is focused on the Little Tennessee River, and we are that nine-and-a-half shoe size, and we are one of a kind with this river. We're not size 11 like the Nana Halo, we're not size five like the Shatuba River, we're not Whitewater. We're an ecosystem-rich, biodiversity, high-biodiversity river, and my bread and butter is showing that off to tourists. I sit on the Franklin Town Tourism Board. My agenda is highlighting the ecology of this beautiful county that we live in. This time next year, or a year and a half in the future, when I'm standing on Rednet Beach and I'm getting ready to take one of my natural cultural history tours with my group of people, sometimes it's to a group of 10-year-olds, sometimes it's a group of ladies in their 80s, as I like to call them, but there's people that are coming here, a lot of them are often brand-new people living that have just bought real estate from some of you guys here, and they want to love this place, they want to learn about it, and they moved here because it's so beautiful. They don't know what sits under that beauty, which is a whole cornucopia of biodiversity unlike anything else in this state. So I'm just hoping in the future that our nine-and-a-half size shoe of a river gets to be highlighted for its ecology and not for its real estate value, its views. I really, I really want us to be able to have, you know, a next generation of ecotourist leaders that are carrying people into the woods, showing them the value of it, and how we don't need to mess it up and turn it into anywhere America, which you can do anywhere. Please, please make these commissioners protect our flood plains, y'all. And when this Lake Emery Dam thing goes forward, if it does, please let me be able to stand on that riverbank and say, our Macon County Planning Board, back in 2025, they made the most incredible recommendations to this pack of county commissioners, and they put it to them because they had the expertise in that group of county commissioners, I mean, in that group of planning, to direct what the county commissioners do to this river. So I know within this group, I trust this group with this river. There's a lot of experts on this planning board. There's a couple people who may not feel that way, but I really do, I want to be able to stand there in front of my guests, my clients, the people that pay me $75 a pop to tell them about the river. I want to be able to tell them that this Macon County Planning Board has vision, and they want another generation of people after me to be able to lead tours and send people home knowing that we care very much about this place. And I have faith in y'all. I hope that you'll do me proud.
Nathan Panal?
Hello. My family has been here for generations. I just felt a deep appreciation of these lands and these waters. And to say that I am disappointed that we are here yet again is an understatement. I'm an novelist. I am quite acquainted with ways of corruption. I have to be to write my stories. If I were to write, you know, a local government villain, I'd have them hold public meetings at inconvenient times like the day after New Year's, when people are still traveling and recovering from the holidays. I'd have them provide uncomfortable claustrophobia-inducing seating arrangements while they can make power by taking up a disproportionate amount of the room. Regardless of any negative reactions, I'd have them have meeting after meeting that doesn't actually get anything done to exhaust people, and boy, do I feel exhausted. Instead of focusing on uplifting the least, like our elderly, disabled, poor, and veterans, to cultivate greater prosperity and justice for all, I'd have them inflate the importance of issues that benefit them and cloak the nastiness with false morality like claiming it's to protect property rights. For the coup de grace, I would have them take inspiration from a mirror maze and make things as confusing as possible. And these lands and waters are Cherokee. We didn't barter or buy them, nor were we gifted them. Our worst ancestors worked with a tyrannical government to steal them at gunpoint. Has a tribe even been consulted? Many of our people love our Cherokee neighbors, as themselves, and desire reconciliation. Given the catastrophic devastation Helene caused, why aren't you working to bring our people and the tribe together to protect our neighbors and these lands and waters we love by rejuvenating the flood plains to what they were under the stewardship of the Cherokee? Maybe no one in our local government is corrupt. Maybe it's just an appearance issue due to gross incompetence or something. Not likely, but regardless, a reputable third party should conduct a thorough investigation, or everyone can just resign. Thank you.
Gwen Linder, Lynn Martin?
Thank you. My name is Gwen Littler. I'm a resident of Franklin, and I well remember when my daughter was a student at Western, the devastation caused by Ivan and Francis about 20 years ago, and the loss of life that occurred in Jackson County at the time, and that was not even near the devastation we've experienced with Helene. So I'm approaching this a little bit differently. Something came to my attention just in the past couple of days, that the effect of the Helene on the hellbender population, and how entire hellbender populations have been washed away nesting places, and how that is just putting it... It's so severe now that, as on December 13th, a row... Okay, I'm just going to read my highlighting so I don't stumble over my words. I'm reading from an article in the Asheville Citizen Times from late December. "The eastern hellbender, known for living among American, North American rivers and streams, has long been considered an at-risk species after the wrath of tropical storm Helene. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has proposed the animal to be placed on the list of endangered species. Officially proposed on December 13th, the rule would declare the eastern hellbender as endangered under the Endangered Species Act. For the past decade, the hellbender population has been declining. Most mountain rivers and streams, due to the devastation, regional wildlife researchers and scientists reported the species had suffered greatly during the flood. The proposed rule will not immediately be put into effect. After being proposed on December 13th, the Fish and Wildlife Service will accept public comment on the proposal for 60 days. After that, a final rule we have to be set forth by the agency. Efforts to restore hellbender habitats in western North Carolina include dam removals and restoring vegetations along rivers and streams that help filter erosion. One of the biggest impacts from Helene was the scouring of riverbanks and subsequent erosion that led to muddy, dirty waters in hellbender habitats." That's just a few. I've got a copy for your records here, but I have to say that I don't see how changing the current regulations will help the species that this area is known for and what so many other people have affirmed make this area special. Thank you. And I have a copy if you'd like to have it.
Was there anybody else that would like to comment? Okay.
Yes, that's what's there. Hi, Sarah.
Hello. I'd like to speak. I know you're not dealing with the flood plain issue right now, but I would like to speak to that as well while it's fresh in our mind. I would really like us to rethink that because Helene taught us the value in giving our rivers more space, because we cannot predict sometimes in 48 hours what our weather systems will do with our topography, and it is because of our topography and our unique weather systems that we get sometimes, is because we should have stricter, more stricter regulation about the flood plain ordinance than the rest of the state, because we have got more elevation changes than, say, the vast majority of Durham, you know, and Chapel Hill, like it's pretty flat and especially close to Plank. One size can't fit all here, I'm sorry. And in regards to the Lake Emery Dam, I really think it would be wise to leave it in place until you have a good plan as to what to do with the sediment that's all built up and filled up the lake, because that sediment has bonded to all the chemicals, PCBs, all your forever chemicals. It's been invented since the last 100 years and been...
your forever chemicals. It's been invented since the last 100 years and then banned. It's all locked down in the garnet sediment in the lake. And if you take out the dam without a good plan as to what to do with what's filled up the lake, I worry that it'll wash straight down into Needmore. The reason that should concern you is because Needmore is the most pristine part of the little Tennessee that we've got. It's the moneymaker as far as the nature and ecology in this town. And there is a lot of money tied up in your biodiversity staying intact. Because the places that don't have good biodiversity still intact are usually kind of yucky places to live. The old timers used to say, never drink out of a string that don't have a salamander in it. That's because salamanders have a unique ability to kind of tell you what the water's like. Because they breathe through their skin, they, hellbenders especially, can absorb things through their skin really easily. And if you have water that can't support a hellbender, you don't have water you want to drink. And this town really has an amazing resource in your drinking water. And I think that we should be trying to protect our drinking water quality around here, rather than trying to degrade it by seeing how many RVs you can cram on the riverbank and seeing how many things you can put that close to the creek. Because the water will really, water is your value in your land. Because my great-grandmother, my mom, show, one of her most valuable possessions was her clean water, she said. She had cattle, but everything, but you can't do anything with your cattle if you can't water them. I'm carrying water right now for three horses, and boy, how did they drink a lot. You need to have clean water real close by. And if you don't protect the water in this county by protecting, having strong ordinances, you're going to set yourself up for failure in the future. And I worry that sometimes making money seems like a good idea in the short run, but in the long term, the water in Asheville right now is kind of questionable. They're getting better, but there for a while it was real bad. I would hate to see Franklin go through that because it's three feet. There was three feet keeping us from having a water system problem like they've got over in Asheville during Helene. If the river had gone up three feet, Franklin would, may not still have any water if that had played out here. So we really, I shouldn't say that as like, I just, I'm not trying to tell y'all how to do business. I just, I have concerns, just wanted you to know. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the old business, please. Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to start with, uh, thank everybody for the public comment. It's well-regarded here. I also want to start also by adding, everybody was, for the most part, respectful of what this board does, but I, I do what Caleb does. I'm the town planner for the town of Highlands, and I sit indefinitely on this board as a representative of Highlands. The only other member on this board like that is Justin Setzer, who is not here tonight. And he sits, he is the town planner for Franklin, sits on this board for Franklin. This board is an advisory board for the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners comes up with these ideas, these changes, things they want to do, and they have to send it to us per state statute for us to review and give recommendation. So every other member you see here, besides myself and Justin Setzer, is dedicating their time to come and sit and serve on this board. So if there is a bone to pick or to berate anybody, I would suggest you go talk to your Board of Commissioners during a public hearing if they do decide to proceed with this. Because these other members that sit on this planning board and advisory board to the board have dedicated their time and have signed up to serve on this board and were appointed by the board. So I do want to thank each of you members for what you do and your dedicated service to this county. With that being said, to follow what Chairman Owen's statements were, from what I understand, FEMA is updating, actively updating the flood maps for Macon County. Also, in speaking with a representative for the Floodplain Mapping Office of the North Carolina Department of Emergency Management today, the Western, he's the NFIP planner for Western North Carolina, his name's Terry Fox. Their office is actively updating the North Carolina State Model Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. The last passed one was 2021. They're obviously working on the updated one. And also, I had a chance to read the Water Quality Advisory Committee's reports. I know a few of those members on there and think highly of the people that have taken the time to put that report together. So in accordance with the Water Quality Advisory Committee's report, I make a motion that we deny the proposed changes for the Macon County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance.
Thank you for your motion. I need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
First point of order. I'd like to know how, why we have this back in front of us in the first place. It was never sent to us by the county commissioners. They never voted on it. I went back and looked at all the old meetings. They already had a public hearing on it, and I think it was July. They had a public hearing. They put it off to October. They had a subcommittee appointed, I think it was four people on it, two commissioners and two people from this board, neither of which are here tonight, one of which is now a county commissioner. And they made the recommendations that are the ones that we see here, to make some changes from what was originally put on their agenda at the county Board of Commissioners. So I think we would be out of order to even take this up. And based upon what Bill McLarnie and Jean has said, the county commissioners have asked us basically to send this back to them with, with no recommendation. And I, I think that's what, we need to put this right back to county commissioners. If they want to send it to us, they should vote on it and send it back, or decide what they want to do. And they have not done that.
So I just want to get some clarification. They, whatever they sent to us was in accordance with what was said at the county meetings that I was at. No, it wasn't. Well, I heard this, you know, we're sending this to the planning board for their recommendations. Pretty sure I heard that.
Nope. It's not in the minutes. It's not there. I can assure you, they didn't do it.
At some point, it was sent to us, is that correct?
It was sent to us and it was taken up at the May meeting, and we didn't do anything with it.
They took it back in May?
That was in May. They put it on their own agenda. They put it on the agenda. I think, I'm not positive it was July, but they put it on for the, I believe it was a July meeting. And that's when they had the public hearing. Most of you, a lot of you were at that public hearing at the county commissioners' office, or I mean, boardroom. And they decided to take, there were three items that were on there. One of those, the watershed ordinance by state statute, had to come back to the planning board. And we took that up two meetings ago and recommended it back out, back to the county commission. The other two, one of which they passed, the other one being this one, has never been taken up by the county commissioners. They...
So you're saying that they sent us the three things at the same time?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying they sent back correctly the waters, the watershed ordinance, not the, not the floodplain ordinance, watershed ordinance. That was appropriate. That was by state statute. They have to do that. This, they've already had a public hearing on what we're talking about. It's already been done. They had the public hearing on it. They scheduled to hear it on October. It's never been taken up.
So your point of order would be with what they're doing, not with what we're doing? So where did, we are, we are...
I'm saying that we are out, I'm saying that we are out of order to do anything because it was not sent to us properly.
I don't think that public agrees with that.
Well, that's a point of order that you'd have to take up with the commissioners.
Now, I could take it up here. It depends on the votes. But I think based on what Jean and Mr. McLarnie have both said, that we need to let it go back. We need to let the, the other thing is, the state legislature and the Department of Fire and Health to state level, they're going to be looking at these basordance based on what's happening right now. And we let, need to let them just do whatever they're going to do and see what kind of changes they make to the state guidelines. And then the county can give us some direction as which, where we need to go, what they want us to do, and we can go from there. But the county can do what, regardless of how we vote, the county can do whatever, the county commissioners can do whatever they want to. And they've already had a, they've already had the public hearing. There are those that know that.
So Madam Chair, when we have a procedural point of order, I think it's something that we just note and in...
Now, that's ruling from the chair, should be.
If there's a question to it, that's something that we note in our report and, and pass it on to the commissioners for them to judge. It's their report that they requested yours. You're saying that they didn't say it. I said they did. So now we, you know, how do we resolve that?
Well, it gets resolved by the chairman.
Do, so do we have a copy of the, of the minutes of the, did you bring forth your evidence? Did you bring forth your evidence for that?
The minutes are, the minutes are out there. You can go back and check it.
I wasn't the one that's bringing forth the, the point of order question.
Well, it was never appropriately sent back to this committee. The chairman said she watched the minutes of the meeting, one of the meetings, and no, it's never been sent. I, I talked to, well, the other members of the board today. Again, they said it was never sent back.
We got a motion, a second on the floor, Madam Chair. So we're still in discussions, correct? But we have questions, we still have questions, right? So, are you done, Mark?
I just brought up the point of order. So I'm asking for a ruling from the chair whether we have the authority to vote on this, on this motion or not.
We're going to take care of the motion in second, first.
Point of order should precedes the motion. Go ahead.
I defer to the county attorney.
Where is he?
For this procedural. I mean, he's not here.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If y'all want to put this off till the next meeting, then you can...
I want to proceed with the motion in second. I mean, you're saying there's a procedural issue. There may well be. I don't, I haven't watched the county board meeting in probably the last two or three meetings I've had. Of course, me and my wife's had a brand-new baby, so I've had some other things occupy my mind. So there could be. But at this point, we got, I mean, I don't have the county attorney. We've got an agenda presented to us with the order of business on it. I say we take care of it. If there's something wrong with it, we're an advisory committee anyways. They'll send it back to us and say you inappropriately did this. It's not like we're about to approve this change and it's going to go into effect tomorrow. Or we're going to deny this thing. It's going to be done.
I'm just trying to do what the county commissioners asked us to do according to the chairman, that they asked us to send it back to them.
Does the county attorney, or the chairman, or anybody, do they see the agendas that go out for the planning board?
Uh, not regularly, I see.
Are they posted online for anybody to see? I mean, Josh, Josh is the lead on, so I mean...
It's in the paper.
There, there's been, it's in the paper. I mean, there are opportunities for people to see this. If there was a procedural issue, I believe the county should have told us that. So we're going to address the agenda that was sitting in front of us.
Commissioners obviously know we're having a meeting about this.
We got a person, we got a motion in the second.
Watch five there in your rolebook.
It would take me a long time. It would have been a lot better if you would have brought the minutes.
Well, I'd had to brought the minutes, papers, and one of those meetings since then. But from the, from the common sense standpoint, we had two people say, look, the county commissioners have said let this come back to us and let, let the state do their work. I'm not saying that I'm a gift. I, I know there's some changes that need to be made in this floodplain ordinance. I'm not arguing with that. I could name some of them. I could show you some things that I'm familiar with. Number one, the floodplain maps are just terrible. I mean, you got things in the, the non-encroachment area, the flood area, that on our maps show that are not even non-encroachment areas on our maps. And there's obviously things in there that are, that they're really in the, not, should be in the non-encroachment areas. And they're, they're, they're a problem.
We need to settle your point of order question before we start digressing into other subjects.
Sure.
So I would say, Madam Chair, that without any evidence to support the point of order position that it has to be a moot point at this point in time, that there's no evidence that this is the way it is. There is evidence to the contrary in light of notices, public notices in the paper that have been available for everybody to read. The commissioners have not said to us directly that we don't need you to take care of this anymore. And they would have if they did not want us to move forward with it. We've not received any direction. Those are the people that we receive direction from. I move that the point of order be dismissed.
It's, the point of order should be addressed by the chair. If you want us to go back to the county commissioners, as you suggested at the first of the meeting, or we can, or I can withdraw it and we can vote on it if you can send it up there, or not send it up there. I don't know what the vote will be.
I think, I don't think your point of order is probably going to have any bearing on the vote, to tell you the truth.
Well, I don't want to be put in a position to have to vote against something I might eventually be for. But as it stands right now, I'm certainly not going to vote for it. I'm not going to vote for this motion.
You're going to abstain from voting yet?
No, I'm not going to abstain. No, I'm not going to abstain from voting. I'm going to read you on something. That we need to keep in mind, the people lose, lose sight of. Here's something that was written by some folks that were a hell of a lot smarter than most people in this room, including myself. And it's pretty important. It was put in place in, uh, 1889. It's the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. It says, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." These are issues that we have to address in this floodplain ordinance, and you're going to have to address it with the dam issue as well. Because that dam is owned by other people. And I was hoping that we could get to that in the new business and talk about that, because I don't know. I'm open-minded to whether that dam should go or not. But it's still, that's an issue that's got to be addressed. And it's an issue that's addressed in this floodplain ordinance, whether if you're too restrictive, if all you can do is you own a piece of property and you can grow grass or trees on it, you're basically taking property without due process and just compensation. And that's something that nobody wants to talk about. Or not in these rooms, they don't want to talk about. And the people that want to show up that are against this ordinance, the people that own the property, most of the ones that don't, I'm not saying everybody, but a lot of the people, I've had calls from people that own the property. And they're the ones that don't show up at these meetings. You know why they don't show up at these meetings? Because they're not like me. They don't give a shit about getting their name. They don't want their name dragged through the mud. That's why they don't show up to meetings. They don't want to be in the newspaper. Well, I've been in the newspaper enough that, you know, I know that this is not really, really going to matter. There's 35,000 people that live in this county, not 50. So y'all vote on it if you want to. Or if you want me to withdraw my point of order, I'll withdraw withdraw my point of order, I'll withdraw it, Madam Chair. But if you want to rule on it, you can rule on it.
I need to explain something that I watched today, the September meeting of the county commissioners. I heard about this and I went back to that September meeting. And I watched that meeting. And in the very first 20 minutes of that meeting, the commissioners requested to change their agenda, to pull off the watershed and to pull off the floodplain. And they went into a discussion about sending the floodplain back to the planning board. And that is when it was brought about, the dam also. That while they were sending this back to the planning board, they needed to send it back with the dam also included in it. Now, this was a September meeting. The way I understood the meeting, and again, we don't have the county attorney here, but the county attorney did state that they needed to vote on the change to the agenda first. And it was first and seconded, that the agenda be changed. There was no other vote during that meeting. I watch every one of these meetings. If not in person, I watch them every time. So that I'm educated as to what the commissioners are doing also. Our liaison, who's not here, stated to Mr. McClarny during that meeting that they could banter back and forth all night long, "Let's take this up in the planning board meetings where the public can have a say and not be restricted." It was never voted on. It was brought up that way. They all agreed, but there was never an official vote.
Well, I guess I'm confused on the fact that, you know, the planning board can give a recommendation to the town board, and that's all it is, is a recommendation. The only state statute I know of is that the... and whenever you're making an amendment to an ordinance like this, a development ordinance, it has to go to the planning board for review and recommendation. That board has 30 days to give a recommendation back to the town board or county board, and then at that point, they can make the decision. So if no decision is made at the planning board level, 30 days pass, they can make a decision without our recommendation. I guess I just don't get why we can't... But I don't... I don't know of anywhere in the state law that would prohibit us to send a recommendation to them denying the proposed changes. I don't know where in the statute, if you could quote it in general statute where it's at. I've never seen it, is what I'm saying in my... in my experience with this.
This... I was told that the... that's true concerning the watershed ordinance, but not the floodplain.
It's any land development ordinance. I mean, I've went to school. I'm a certified zoning official. I've went to school on this. I've been doing it for six years. If you're amending your floodplain ordinance, you have to send it to the planning board. We had to do the same thing at the town of Highlands. I just... I don't under... I mean, if you can give me some general statute that says, "Hey, you know, we can't give this recommendation to the town..." or to the county commission, okay, well, then that's fine. I guess if they want to table it, that's up to them, whatever. But I mean, we've got a motion in a second. I don't see a procedural issue going to hold us up.
Okay. I didn't want to send something back to the county commission that is... that according to Gene and Mr. McClarny, it sounded like they said, "We want to just let this be. Let the state see what kind of changes they make and recommend." I didn't take it up. And I didn't want to send this recommendation to them when they in fact have pretty much said they're not for that.
And they absolutely couldn't do that. Like I said, they don't have to listen to our recommendation.
Gene, if you don't want to make a ruling on it, I can withdraw it and we can go on with the first and the second and vote on it. But I got a... I got a feeling that, I don't know, maybe you might end up being the tie-breaking vote. So either way, it's going to be up to you probably, whether we send it back with a recommendation or not.
Madam Chair, what was the harm in accepting his withdrawal?
The only harm that I see is I do not have legal counsel as to the accuracy.
If he's requesting it, all you have to do is agree to it. There's no legality there
I think based on what I heard our liaison say, I don't have legal...
Would you like me to withdraw the point of order?
Would you please withdraw the point of order?
I'll withdraw the point of order.
I just... because, like I said, because there's no legal staff here, I did physically... I did hear them say they were sending it to the planning board.
Okay. So we have a... we have a motion in a second. I'd like to speak to the motion then.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think I pretty much said what, for the most part, I want to say. I don't think we ought to send something. The commissioners asked us to let come back to them and let play out. I don't think we ought to be sending this with a recommendation to the county commissioners at this point. And I would ask the members to vote against this motion at this point.
Would you please restate your motion?
Oh, yeah, actually, I've got it written down.
I completely understand it. Thank you.
So in accordance with the Water Quality Advisory Committee's report, I make a motion that we deny the proposed changes to the Macon County flood damage prevention ordinance.
Okay. And so can I make some comments and questions? We're still in that thing.
We're still in discussion, yes.
Right. So, number one, the new news of FEMA drawing up new maps. Honestly, I feel that's unrelated to any decision-making that we would make. If lines have changed on flood areas, that has no bearing on the work of the floodplain ordinance changes. It's as simple as that. So you can just take that out of your head and say, "Great. When those new maps take... are enacted, then whatever we decide or whatever the commissioners decide to do on the floodplain ordinance takes place according to those drawings." If the state of North Carolina is changing their floodplain guidance, do you happen to know when that's expected, anybody?
No, I don't. Like I say, the last approved model ordinance was 2021. I've talked to Terry Fox today. They're still working on the... on the new... on the new model. I mean, they amend this model all the time. The FEMA maps are updated constantly. This model's updated constantly, obviously. It's ever-changing.
Okay. So it's not something that's going to take a year? Is something that's going to take less than a year or more than that?
They didn't give me a timeline on it.
Historically, how long is those things? You say they change all the time.
Well, they change periodically, yes. And they've got, you know, you can look at your past model ordinances, just as unified development ordinance for a town or a county is updated periodically, those ordinance are as well. So I don't know exactly how long or a timetable or any type of estimation I could even...
And the situation that the state is in now with what damage that they've had as a result of Holene, I would imagine that any changes that they make would be in anticipated need of doing it quickly because of what has recently happened.
From what I understand, both the changes to the flood maps and the model ordinance were undertaken before the flood actually happened. But obviously, that's going to be a point of consideration, obviously, if they were making changes. But yeah, this is, like I said, something I had.
So just one more thing that I have to say that, you know, I proposed two or three times, I think three... on three different occasions, that I proposed to the commissioners after all the meetings and such, that I believe modification... it's an opportunity to make modifications to our existing floodplain ordinance, to actually make it better. We could still deny the large changes, but allow for changes that make common sense to property owners to be able to make corrections, make access improvements, small common sense things. I'm disappointed that none of this, none of that has been taken into consideration. I would... I would vote to not approve the ordinance, period. I wish I could say yes because I would have liked to seen those modifications and made something... made some lemonade out of this lemon. But that's not going to happen because we were never given any direction on those things, which is disappointing. We were... we were told to work directly with WQ... Bill helping. We were told to work directly with the guys to come up with something. And you guys made a nice presentation that I think, you know, we could have woven improvements and your suggestions and come up with something solid. But it was crickets, as far as I'm concerned, from the county commissioners, no direction whatsoever. So I would just say I would be voting for to not approve the ordinance. And especially in light that there's going to be new floodplain guidance coming from North Carolina soon anyway. And then if we want to bring it up again, the commissioners may have us look at it again.
Now, Madam Chair, I would add, I may have to amend my motion because there are some, it looks like, procedural changes that they've had to make. And we just had to do it recently in our ordinance. But there's stuff like where they've taken out Mean Sea Level and put in ABD 1988. There's FEMA Form... It used to be FEMA Form 086034. That's now FF-206, D Y 22. Changes like that need to be done because they need to bring... the county needs to bring their ordinance up to the minimum standard of the model ordinance, which is not even that, until some of these changes are made. So I mean, there are... what they've done is they've thrown procedural changes in here, and then they've lumped this fill in the floodplain along with it. But there are procedural changes that do need to be done that we had to do, that Terry Fox had told me if we didn't do, we didn't even have an enforceable flood ordinance. So we had to... we had to do all those updates.
So are you now amending the motion?
I would just amend that we deny the P... that the flood ordinance, you know, they do proceed with some of these procedural changes, but not with the fill in the floodplain or the adverse impact of termination as well. It's, I guess, spelled out on there.
Well, I think that the acronyms that you're referring to-
Yeah.
-that refer to something else.
Yeah.
It's... that would be taken care of regardless of whether we vote for it or not.
Yeah, those are something that will need to be changed. I just don't want my motion people to think that, you know, I was disapproving every change in there. It's just the adverse impact that I'm proposing. There are other changes above and beyond that.
Okay. So in other words... Oh, right. Okay. I was reading you backwards.
Yeah.
So in other words, the acronym changes and the statute changes and the numbers and this and that, those are changes that should be approved.
Those need to be changed.
But everything else is a no.
That's correct.
Well, as long as you're voting no for one thing, you're really voting no for all of it, right?
Do what now?
If you're voting against the ordinance because of one thing, you're against the ordinance.
I can take a piece out of it. There's nothing against me saying, you know, "I'm fine with this and I don't want this." Or I could even suggest to commissioners, "I want this on top of that."
And that's-
So I can go in and change.
Yeah.
And I don't have to just look at what they're saying, "Oh, okay," you know.
And that's exactly what I was looking to do in the modifications, present things that were acceptable, that are currently in their proposed plan, add to it and take away things from it, the adverse impact of that.
Yeah. And again, we're not approving or disapproving. We have no authority over what happens with this ordinance. We're just giving a recommendation. I just want to state for the record that the procedural changes, the acronym changes, the numbers, things like that, that bring it up to the minimum standard of the state model, need to be changed.
Well, if we send it back to them with no recommendation, they could do all those things.
We send it back with a denied recommendation or approved recommendation, they can do all those things.
That's true, too.
Again, like I say, we've got a motion in a second. If you want to call a vote, if it doesn't happen, then I guess we can figure out another way to skin this guy.
No, I just don't think that we need to be making a recommendation based on what we have and what they... the guidance that they give us.
Okay.
I could offer a motion to table the motion, but that's not going to do anything. It's going to be at the same place, so...
Well, we have to cure this first motion.
I have to choose that.
So everybody understand the motion on the table?
Let's go through it one more time. So basically, the proposed ordinance the boards give us to look at, the motion on the floor would reject the changes to the adverse impact of termination, any outside fill in the floodplain or anything like that that we've been talking about for the last couple of months. But it would not encompass those changes that are... the acronym changes and the little procedural changes and form, you know, changes like that that basically, for example, the FEMA Form 086034 no longer exists. It's this different number. Those are the procedural changes that need to be made. So the only thing that this... that my recommendation would do would be reject the no adverse impact termination. I guess it's that Section C as seen on the front.
He's saying it's no... In other words, it'd be saying that there's no... no fill there. No fill is a primary change in this. There's no fill there. They would stay the way it is, basically. Stay the way it is.
All right.
And we have that seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
God love you all. I love you all. I gotta go.
Are we going to be discussing the dam or not on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay. The new business as far as the effects of moving the Lake Emery Dam?
Madam Chair, since... I got a question on old business. Is it proper to bring it up now before we discuss new business? It's old business back one meeting.
From November?
It's on the watershed.
Or on November?
Well, that's on the agenda.
Yeah, that's already done.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just had a question on this.
Yeah, it's not.
It's to do with...
Let's get out for the meetings.
We'll move on to the new business, the effects of removing the Lake Emery Dam. My thoughts on this is, this is huge. This is huge. There is so much involved in this. We, as a planning board, I don't feel as though we have the capability of doing or even paying for the comprehensive study that needs to be done on this. I myself can't tell you the benefits of it being there or it not being there. I do know that there are years of toxins built up behind it. I do know that there are years of toxins built up behind it. And I just think that, in my opinion, this needs to go back to the commissioners and they need to order a comprehensive study done. Pay somebody, a bipartisan company, a diversified company, to go out there and do a study. Because this is huge. I think it starts there first, with a completed study. Bring it back, look at it, whatever. But number one, it's not their dam. It does belong to a private company. It and, I believe, 170 acres behind it. So I just feel as though that's what needs to be done.
I agree with you. Just a second, what Mr. McLarnie said, this is a complicated issue.
Very much so.
And I have no expertise. I couldn't even tell you what the effects or advantages or disadvantages of this being done. My motion here today would be to... That the board, the county board, have a report done. Hire some outside firm or someone who specializes in what they're wanting to find out because I don't, I don't know at this point.
Do we have a motion on the table? Do we have a second?
What's the motion?
Motion that we send it back to the town or to the county board and they have a report done to figure out what exactly the effects of removing the Lake Emery Dam.
So we're here to recommend that they have, that they do a study?
Do a study, yeah. Have someone that specializes in this because I have no idea.
Hire an outside company, yeah.
I have no idea what's going to happen. What would happen.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I've got an open mind about whether to do it or not to do this. But I don't, I mean, there are just too many questions. If I could go back to the early 1900s when it was built, you know, I'd say, yeah, I'd prefer to see a free-flowing river through there and not have that. But the people in the town of Franklin at the time probably wanted some electricity as well. They were glad to see it. And then in the years since then, you've got all those factories that were upstream in Raven County that do basin and all the other stuff that's gone in there. And it does, it does act as a sediment basin, basically. I agree with that. It probably does. If you could just wave a wand and get rid of the potential problems that you've got there, you could do it. But the other thing is, who's going to pay for it? I'm sure it's not going to be inexpensive. It does still generate, even though they say it's not that much power, it generates a lot of good power that this company sells back into the system to do power. And you're going to have to compensate them. And I don't know that the county commissioner, when it comes to that, it's, you know, you don't have the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission involved. You've got, you've got tons and tons of issues to go through. You know, if you could just sort of wave a wand and say, yeah, we'd be glad to be a free-flowing river, that would be great. But how are you going to get that sediment to keep it from going downstream and affecting the lower portions of the river? I agree with all of you. So, yeah, I think we should let the county decide if they want to pay for it or have somebody pay for a full study on it, which they may not want to do.
You're right. But we don't have the pocketbooks to do it. I mean, they need to, if they want this study done, they need to go ahead and...
Maybe a limited scope study and not a full-fledged study. Engineers, I'm sure, would want to report on anything and everything to make the most possible money. And God bless them. That's their job. But it kind of comes down to a few simple things, in my mind. I'm not, I'm not that smart about this stuff. But it'd be great to have, just like Marty said, the river retained, restored back to its original conditions. The problems are the sediments, the pollutions. All of that says money, how much money. And is there a problem with leaving it the way it is? If leaving it the way it is doesn't cost a dime, is there residual problems that are going to grow as a result of not doing anything? If they're miniscule or if there are no additional residual problems, then why touch it? Because it's going to cost way too much money to fix it. I think that limited study right there, whether not doing anything causes additional harm versus spending all that money. That limited study might give you a better direction if you go to a full-fledged study.
Well, and I think, not to sound dumb, but I think the first phone call needs to be made to the company that owns it and say, would you consider selling it? I don't even know if that's been, you know, it was suggested to look into it, but if they aren't even going to sell it, what's the point?
From a little bit that I know about these very small dams, these very small dams are bought by third-party companies that are in the business of flipping them. They do exactly that. They get grant money, they get cities and counties and governments to give them money to take the dam down so that they can make their ultimate cash, they can cash it.
And, I mean, given the industry that I'm in, I understand that. They've owned it an awful long time to be flipping it. So, you know, I...
There's a lot of issue with domain issues. You've also got land up here that was not wetlands. There was farmlands prior to that dam being built. It was farmland. It was tillable land that on the north side of 441 Business and east of 28, that was all farmland out in there. Now it's a big swamp. It's wetlands. And it's federally protected wetlands. And if you take that dam out, you're probably going to affect those wetlands. I mean, you got, you got a significant issues to address.
Yeah.
So I think we need to send it back to let them decide if they want to study on it or not. Or at least preliminary study.
Correct.
Preliminary study. I think that's probably all they need to get a preliminary study done.
Can you repeat your motion?
Yeah, I agree. I'll send it back to the Board of Commissioners. Make them have a preliminary study done or choose how, what they want to do moving forward and figure out the effects of removing the Lake Emery Dam. I'm not going to tell them what to do. I mean, they can hire someone. That's up to them. But I say we just send this back to them.
You still stand behind your second?
I do.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Are there any announcements tonight?
Motion due adjourned.
I don't think this needs a... Can you just hang out for a quick question after adjournment? Because I don't think this has anything to do with itself. It's procedure on solutions on not having forums. I want to just talk about it.
Well, we may have to, I mean, we can't talk outside of a meeting after a forum. And we're being a legal meeting.
No, no, I'm not asking for a forum. I'm saying solutions to...
But I mean, if there's a majority of us that stayed here and talk about this, that's a forum.
It's just a discussion. It's violation of the meeting's law.
Well, we need to sit here in the meeting.
Yeah, we can do it. And that's, that had been brought up to me, too. And I think you just need to read the statement about that. Because we have procedure. This board has procedures. Rules and procedure.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up and discuss it. I had one little thing that I thought might be a good solution.
I said we got to put it on the agenda for next meeting and we can figure it out.
Next meeting.
Yes, sir. We don't need a second. I'll see Paul.